Okay, it's six o'clock, this call the meeting to order. Eric Wellman is traveling this week, so I'll be chairing the meeting and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just two things relative to the agenda. Maria, do we have an additional, do we need to amend the agenda to include an additional item?
Yes, I do have that under manager's report, if that would help.
That's fine. Yep, alright. And the only other thing I wanted to point out is you'll notice on the agenda on the second page that there is a box that's listing following adjournment per Connecticut general statutes. It's chapter 14, section 1, 200, "The Board of Selectmen and Staff Will Meet to Discuss Strategy and Negotiations With Respect to Collective Bargaining For the Unit Represented by the IBPO." Maria has pointed out that per state statutes, this is actually the best practice and the most correct way to be presenting that conversation. And I've actually read the state statute and has it here with me, if anyone has any questions on that afterwards. So Maria, thank you for pointing that out. With that said, let's start with the first, with public audience. You all know what the rules of public audience are, five minutes. What I will do is after four minutes, I'll just let people know that you've hit four minutes. We'll start from right to left. Mr. Kalashman, if you'd like to start, feel free.
I first tonight, primarily because, the first thing that troubled me was I went to a lot of trouble to watch the Board of Finance in their hearing at the school, because there was a question whether or not I had the handicap of it to get there. So I relied on the TV. About three minutes in, it went to black and never came back. And I understand now they have it in a can or so, but nevertheless, these things shouldn't happen. The most important meeting, in my opinion, of the town is the financing and the budget. And the people that were relying watching it and watching the budget, because it was my opinion that a lot of people should be made aware that we're giving, the taxpayer is giving $5,000 to the Chamber of Commerce. It smacks a conflict of interest, number one. Number two, in all due respect to the deputy selectman who's running the meeting tonight, it was terrible. There wasn't one discussion over the $5,000 we're giving the Chamber of Commerce to pay salaries, and that's where it's going. It's not going to any type of bureau or any, it's going to pay a salary. And it's wrong. And then, accordingly, at the meeting I attended at the library, which was a handicap accessible, there, we went through the meeting and two important things were like rushed over. One was the golf course. It's a white elephant, and each year you come out and year after year after year, they drain money. It's like draining the swamp that they say in Washington. They drain money out of there, out of the taxpayer. And where does it go? It goes down to the performing arts, and it has in the past. And what did we have? We had no discussion on the $5,000. A big discussion on the social worker to help people that the town was going to pay $85,000 for. We stopped and do, and Mr. Kelly brought it up, was why are we spending $85,000 this year for a social worker? Why don't we wait until next year? Well, maybe these people can't wait until next year, Mr. Kelly. Maybe some of them are going to be dead. And you don't need it if you're dead. And maybe some of these poor women that are running around pulling their hair out because of the children that are running around crazy because of the misconception of marijuana in this town. And that's another thing I like to jump to, is the marijuana. Here we are, we pay Mr. Hampton, who I'm running against, incidentally, we pay him $40,000 a year. He goes down and collects public funding, and what is he doing at the Capitol? The first thing he did, a very questionable thing in my opinion, and I don't think the town agrees with him, and that was the nomination of Justice McDonald. Right, wrong, or indifferent, he shouldn't have been involved in it. It was a very crucial vote. And then the next thing he's down there discussing, marijuana. They want to legalize marijuana in Simsbury and Connecticut.
Mr. Kalashman, just letting you know, you got one more minute.
Thank you very much. And in closing, the 5th District. Now, here we've elected the 5th District, Ms. Estes, year after year, and she's come to this town hall, and she sat in this town hall, and now what has she done? She's abusing her help. She has the lowest rating in the Congress of people abusing women, and she allows it. And now she's not running anymore. And the people that support her and got her elected, they want to take over the chair. They want to run in for the office now. Why should they run for the office? We're going to have another woman in there to abuse people? And in closing, I want to give an attaboy to the town. The handicap accessibility is very good, and it just needs to be tweaked. It's very good, very accessible, they can come in and go. There's a bump or two when you go into the police station, but outside of that, if it's just tweaked, everything will be good, in my opinion.
It's five minutes, Mr. Kalashman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Thank you.
John Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. On Thursday, April 5th, 2018, the Board of Finance held a public hearing on all budgets submitted to them to review and decide whether the budget should be forwarded for a vote for the referendum on all budgets. A special meeting of the Board of Finance had to be held to clean up the wording on the budgets and all moving parts for the referendum vote. The public hearing, the public of three residents, were listening along with town staff and elected officials to a dysfunctional Board of Finance that was unprepared to resolve institutional failures in judgment. The elected chairman was unprepared to resolve bloated budgets, capital and C and R budgets, paid with cash, and renovations of $23,903,620 to Henry James Middle School prior to a feasibility study. The Board of Finance had discussions of transfer of funds, adding and subtracting funds to and from budgets without any clarity on need or discussion of unintended consequences of encumbering the taxpayers for many years with these expenditures. With only 6% of the voting public participating in the referendum, it is the responsibility of the Board of Finance to forward a fiscally responsible budget and not pass the buck to the taxpayers. The Board of Finance has the mandate to provide the final decision on all expenditure and revenue budgets. However, they have not only failed miserably in their fiduciary responsibilities, but have submitted a budget to the public vote for or against the expenditure that the Board of Finance has refused to resolve. The general fund savings account should not be used to increase budgets, but to reduce taxes. Since the Board of Finance has refused to do the heavy lifting through their irresponsible actions, the taxpayers should reject all budgets until the Board of Finance can do their homework and provide the taxpayer with responsible budgets. I have recently come before the Board of Selectmen with my concerns of Jamie Rabbit, Director of Planning and Community Development, and Jamie Rabbit remains in his position. Failure to act is completely unacceptable. On February 4th, 2018, under the Freedom of Information Act, I asked to review Jamie Rabbit's personnel file. I received a letter from Town Manager Maria Capriola stating, and I quote, "We anticipate the documents ready for your review no later than Friday, April 20th, 2018," end quote. I recently reviewed the expenditures that Jamie Rabbit submitted for reimbursement from his credit card that had reimbursements for state taxes that should have been eliminated with a tax-free number. Therefore, I would expect that Jamie Rabbit reimburse the taxpayers for these expenditures. If he refuses to reimburse the town, my only resolve would be to take him to Small Claims Court for reimbursement on behalf of the taxpayers. I am concerned at one of the gender items, C, proposed public gathering permits according to the event summary for Terrapin Band. The event description states, quote, "Simsbury Summer Celsius featuring Terrapin is a day-long summer festival featuring local bands and headlined by Terrapin Band. Terrapin is the ultimate Grateful Dead experience," end quote. It is alleged that the Grateful Dead concerts bring patrons that use marijuana. I was told that concerts bring patrons with marijuana use, and without accepting this provision, concerts will not come to Simsbury. It appears that Dave Ryan, President of the Simsbury Performing Arts, has designated the area as a sanctuary area where marijuana use is condoned along with all mind-altering drugs. These concerts are inappropriate on town-owned property, whether it is provided by the Simsbury Performing Arts or any other organization. It appears that Simsbury Meadows has become a destination place for marijuana use by the public and condoned by public officials. Will the $5,000 in the budget for Chamber of Commerce Tourist Bureau be used to encourage visitors to participate in concert that encourage the use of marijuana and other mind-altering drugs? Will the brochure welcome visitors to Sin City?
John, one more minute, okay?
What message do we send to our youth when public safety is ignored? Why should anyone be subjected to mind-altering drugs when going to a concert? Since the concert will be a day-long event, will people be allowed to use mind-altering drugs throughout the town if they have a wrist bracelet on the Terrapin Band event? Is Simsbury becoming Woodstock with trailer camps and drug use? The Board of Selectmen is responsible for the health and safety of the community using the approval process for all members of gathering permit process. Cover for approving gathering permits does not have this level of acceptability from the Board of Selectmen. Do not hide behind the approval process from others to rubber stamp the permit. I am asking the Board of Selectmen to deny this event as inconsistent with the values of the community. And all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at John Coe, Newsfeed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan, why don't we start with you?
Good evening. Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. I'm just here still advocating for taking a landscape approach to our forests. I know you have under either Correspondence or Communication a letter from the Conservation Commission, so I just want to thank you for looking at this seriously and taking an overall view of our open space from a landscape perspective, which will be part of the open space management plan, and not moving forward with any one piece until we get a chance to do that. I have some more documents to submit, but I'll submit them electronically. You're probably still wading through the stuff that I sent last week, but I just want to make sure we don't preclude any opportunities for special habitats or things that are very unique on the various properties. So we do have four plans for four forests, and they're very, very different properties. And each of these plans is kind of a good enough plan, just looking at that one property. But it doesn't really take into account the local, detailed local information that we have, the biodiversity databases that we have. And it's just some examples. I mean, Beldon is very old, it's already exhibiting old growth characteristics in some areas. It might even be restricted on the deed that we shouldn't be foresting it, so this wouldn't be a good choice. Ethel Walker Woods is a core forest, it has a lot of species of concern and endangered species, and very diverse habitats, so we shouldn't be doing that one. Onion Mountain is next to a trap rock ridge, which is an imperiled habitat and is also a major wildlife corridor. So I just want to make sure that we take these features into account from kind of a landscape perspective. And we are so incredibly blessed in this area with this diversity of forests and habitats, and I just want to make sure that we do the best thing going forward. So, thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm John Schaper, 16 Lostbrook Road. I just wanted to re-invite you to the forum, which I believe Helen Peterson mentioned to you earlier. We now have a printed up announcement about it, and I wanted to go over that with you and just make sure everybody has that. I have copies for you. On Thursday, April 26th, 2018, the Town of Simsbury, the Simsbury Land Trust, the Canton Land Conservation Trust, and the Farmington River Watershed Association, cordially invite you to attend the Planet, Our Forests, and Championship Trees. This regional forum will be held in the program room at the Simsbury Library, 725 Hot Meadow Street, led by Eric Hammerling, Executive Director of the Connecticut Forest and Park Association. Forum participants are Dr. William Mumaw, Professor Emeritus of International Environmental Policy at the Fletcher School, Tufts University. He will present data on the dynamic relationship between forests and the earth's climate with a focus on North America and New England. The other speaker will be Robert Lever, co-author of the Sierra Club Guide to Ancient Forests of the Northeast, recognized expert in old growth forests and large trees. He's recently been here and measured the Pinchot Sycamore, and will be submitting that for consideration as a national champion tree. Check-in and a light supper will be available around 6:00 PM to provide time for socializing, and then the program will start about 7:00. So just wanted to remind everybody in the office.
Thank you, John. So as John is doing that, I will do the first selectman's report. Eric did give me five things that he felt was worth highlighting for people. The first was to acknowledge that on Thursday, the Board of Finance held their meeting and then did vote on their recommendations of budgets to forward to the town. The actual referendum is scheduled for, excuse me, one second, Tuesday, May 1st, and the referendum is held at one polling place, which is Henry James. So it is important that people participate in that referendum. Secondly, hometown hero nominations. The town is seeking nominations for the 2018 Hometown Hero Award. If you know someone who has performed a deed or service that has made this community a better place to live, you can submit their nomination. Nominations will be accepted through April 29th, and you can get more information on the town website. On Saturday, April 14th, will be hosted by the Farmington Valley Trails, a trail-wide cleanup day. Again, from 10:00 to 1:00, volunteers will cover a one-mile stretch of trail, starting from one of six staging areas, including Iron Horse Boulevard. Over 200 people came out last year across the valley. The Simsbury Public Library is hosting a volunteer expo on Saturday, April 28th, from 10:00 to noon. Participating organizations should set up between 9:30 and 9:45. Tables and space throughout the library will be provided. This is a drop-in event that is free and open to the public. And then the last update is relative to open space stewardship. A forum titled The Planet, Our Forests and Championship Trees, will be held April 26th at 7:00 PM in the program room of the Simsbury Library. It will be led by Eric Hammerling, Executive Director of Connecticut Forest and Parks Association. With that, Maria, you want to do your updates?
Thank you. Good evening. This evening, I would request that we make one addition to the agenda. Following the public, excuse me, budget public hearing on Thursday evening, staff has prepared the resolutions that are needed in order to set the budget referendum date and to formally approve the fiscal 1819 capital projects. Bond Counsel did assist with preparing that language. So I would recommend this evening that we add fiscal year 1819 operating and capital budget resolutions and setting the budget referendum date to the agenda. This item could be added to your agenda with a 2/3 vote of the body. Resolutions were distributed via email to board members today, and hard copies have been provided and are available at the table to my left. I would also-
Maria, why don't we just take care of getting that on the agenda right now?
That'd be great, thank you.
Is there a motion to add that to the agenda as requested by Maria?
It's a moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further conversation? All who approve, say aye.
Aye.
And against, say nay.
Do you have to say where?
So covers. What?
Do you have to say where on the agenda?
Cheryl, the armchair and professional lawyer, wants the motion to be specific that it will be placed on the agenda in between our proclamation recognizing Shawn Kimball and tax refund requests. So I think we need a friendly amendment technically, right?
I will agree to amend.
Okay.
I will agree to amend my second.
Thank you. Any further conversation or legal insights?
Yeah, thank you.
All who agree, say aye.
Aye.
And any nay, say nay. So carried. Thank you. Go ahead, Maria.
Thank you. The executive session for Deepwater Wind that was listed on our agenda for this evening is not needed, so again, we will not need to have that executive session. I just briefly want to add to the comments that Chris made regarding the non-notice meeting for negotiations. Non-notice meeting is a term that the Public Information Officer at Freedom of Information at the Commission has referred to these meetings that we would have regarding strategy for collective bargaining. A lot of times, folks think that strategy regarding collective bargaining falls under one of the provisions for executive session, but it does not. It technically falls outside of that. And while we're not required to post notice of a non-noticed meeting, I do think for transparency, it's helpful, when possible, just to raise awareness that we will be having a non-notice meeting regarding collective bargaining. So following adjournment of this evening's meeting, what we've listed on the agenda, that the group will be breaking to discuss our strategy related to collective bargaining with our IBPO union. That's the union that represents our uniformed police officers. Regarding appointments, late last week, my office received a request to have multiple committee appointments added to the agenda. We do need a bit more information and/or work on those various requests that we received, so we are working with the town committee on that, and I do anticipate that we will have those ready for the April 23rd meeting. And a quick reminder that we have scheduled an April 13th special meeting that will be held at 8:30 AM, again, this Friday morning, here in the main meeting room of Town Hall. The purpose of the meeting will be to present the Police Commission and the Town Manager's recommendation for appointment for the Police Chief position, and we will also have the fiscal year 1819 budget mailer ready for your review and potential approval as well that morning. We will properly notice that meeting, and I do hope to distribute the pack of materials to you no later than Wednesday. Under Departmental News and Notes for Public Works, our Director of Public Works, Tom Roy, recently took and passed the Supervising Forest Products Harvester Exam. That certification is part of his ongoing training related to his duties as our tree warden, so congratulations to Tom for his work there. A brief update on our various leadership team recruitments. The first round of interviews for Finance Director were conducted on April 4th. Many thanks to Shawn Ascom and Eric Wellman, who assisted with those interviews. We are proceeding with next steps in the recruitment, and we do have a second round of interviewing scheduled for the week of April 16th. Our first round interviews for the Director of Culture, Parks, and Recreation position are scheduled for April 23rd, and Cheryl and Chris Peterson have agreed to assist with those interviews. Lastly, the Police Commission is meeting later this evening to identify their preferred candidate for the Police Chief position, which will be formally presented to the Board of Selectmen at your special meeting this Friday morning. And for special events, there is a Holocaust Remembrance Ceremony that is being held at Ena Memorial Hall this Wednesday, April 11th. It begins at 6:50 in the evening and runs for a 24-hour period through Thursday, April 12th. The event includes a 24-hour continuous reading of the names of victims of the Holocaust. Everyone is welcome to attend. And lastly, the Simsbury Aging and Disability Commission is sponsoring an event on serving the needs of people with limitations. This is a free educational event regarding the role of parents, families, guardians, and conservators. That will be held on April 24th from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at the Simsbury Public Library Program Room.
Thank you, Maria. Our next agenda item is to take moment to pause and recognize that Shawn Kimball is leaving us. This will be his last meeting, he participates. Shawn, look, people are coming out of the woodwork to recognize you. Unbelievable. Oh, they're blocking the door.
Go figure.
Shawn, I don't think any comments can say more than that.
Look at that.
But it is my job to kick this off by trying to speak on behalf of the board, you know, relative to you. And the thing I want to say, Shawn, is the concept that comes to my mind is that many are called, few are chosen. And in both joining Simsbury seven years ago and in leaving to become the Town Manager in Cheshire, you are reflecting that you perform not like the many, but like the few. I knew that you were coming to us initially as part of your pursuit of a master's in public administration from UConn. What I wasn't aware of, until Maria pointed it out, is that in the 40 years of that program, 40 years plus, there are only six people who've gone through that program, roughly six people, who have achieved what's called a local, what's the reference?
Local Government Fellow.
A local government fellow. So which I think demonstrates that you're part of the few and not the many. And I want to point out that there's two other people in this room of the six, both Melissa and Maria, who are part of that process. So we have 50%.
The only male.
The only male, right. There you go. See, you should be doing the marketing. But what I also want to point out in leaving us is there were 56 applicants for Town Manager in Cheshire. And the Town Council in Cheshire chose one person, which is you, Shawn. So again, it shows that you are performing as a leader, as part of the few, and not part of the many. Melissa, Maria, Shawn, Mike, Eric, myself, Cheryl, and Chris want you to know the esteem by which we hold you as someone who's really a good leader. And this weekend, I was trying to think of, from my own observations, what's the cornerstone of what I view as your leadership? And there really were two qualities that came to my mind. The first is you're always knowledgeable, and the second is that you are always interpersonally effective. And those things, for me, translate to being very much a steadying influence and someone who's always steady at the helm in all situations. So today, I decided to go out and take a look at what is Cheshire saying about you? And surprisingly, surprisingly, here's the quote from Rob Oris, who's Chairman of the Town Council. "I am very impressed with Shawn's depth of knowledge, his skills in finance, and his interpersonal skills." Interestingly, he's identified the exact same things that we have. In your seven years here, you've been a stabilizing force, Shawn, during a surprisingly high number of transitions, quite honestly. You've gone through a transition of several Directors of Finance, including your own at one point. You actually were in the middle of a transition from one first select person to another first select person. You actually were involved in a fairly dramatic change of leadership on the Board of Finance. And then ultimately, you were sitting right in the middle of this transition to a new form of government, which had incredible movement and complexity of change to it. And in all those situations, what I think I've seen is a person whose knowledge and interpersonal skills calmly helps teams succeed. I literally feel, when I first came on the board and we had the first budget with the transition of Mary to Lisa, and then subsequently the budget that we did last year, that your quiet, calm, guiding influence was a really important part of our success. And you do all that within the context of someone who's very respectful of other people, always positive, and once in a while, has a sense of humor. So with that, Shawn, know that you have all of our respect. You actually are quoted in that article, and Cheshire is saying that this job is your dream job because you're doing what you want to do in the town that you live. We all can relate to that, and we wish you and your family the best of luck. Thank you. And with that, we have a more formal presentation, which Shawn is going to do-
We're going to make you stand up for this one.
And he's promised only to add lib comments into it occasionally.
Stay up there, Shawn.
This is actually kind of interesting to make, is no longer do we have to figure out which Shawn the board's talking to. We got a couple of press as well, so it's interesting. And Mr. Kelly, is this your first proclamation? This is impressive.
Oh, it might be, yeah.
You're on quite a power trip today. So proclamation to honor Shawn-
So proclamation to honor Shawn Kimball for your dedicated service. Whereas Shawn Kimball has served the Town of Simsbury with distinction for seven years in multiple roles, to say the least, including Human Resources/Risk Manager, we'll skip the dates, but Deputy Director of Administrative Services, interim Finance Director twice, Finance Director, and of course, as we all know, interim Town Manager. Whereas Shawn has provided staff support to the Personnel Subcommittee, Retirement Plan Subcommittee, Insurance Committee, Charter Revision Commission, and the Town Safety Committee. And whereas Shawn drove the development of several initiatives through his tenure, including development of the Town's Risk Management Program, Employee Wellness Program, the consolidation of Health Insurance Services under one carrier, and whereas Shawn was a founding member of the CT Prime Insurance Captain, that's the one that butchered little top.
That's right. That was it.
And represented the Town's financial interests on the Board of Directors. And whereas Shawn was responsible for important technological improvements, including the automation of the Town's Employment Application System, the implementation of Open Simsbury Financial Transparency Software, which I'm not going to figure out how to use. And whereas Shawn has served as a trusted advisor to staff with Town Management and elected officials. And whereas Shawn did this with thoughtfulness and an unfailing sense of humor. Now therefore, let it be known, the people of the Town of Simsbury extend their deepest gratitude to you for your service and hereby recognize April 13, 2018, as Shawn Kimball Day. Mr. Kelly has placed his seal, and the great seal of the Town of Simsbury.
Well, in addition to what my esteemed colleagues have said, you know, we have always appreciated your sense of humor, your willingness to work with us. I know for me personally, anytime I came in with a question or some weird idea about how something was going to work, and you sat there very calmly, I said, "I'm sorry, Cheryl. That's just not right." Go back to the words. But we very much appreciate your smile and your willingness to jump in whenever needed. And whenever you would like to come back and use this with us, we are happy to applaud. He could only open a box.
Don't take the paper. Actually, maybe we should...
There it goes.
It's a multi-part...
Fish is a very shy glass.
Yeah, there's more.
Have a first day of work over there.
Right.
Because, you know, it wouldn't be right. The beer bottle to go with it.
It's a theme here.
He gets through the day. He knows how it works. Pencil pusher.
Thank you all very much. Everyone jump up front. Well, if I could just very quickly say thank you to everybody on the Board of Selectmen, both current members, past members that I've worked with, have been wonderful to work with, the community. It really is a special, exceptional community. I've really enjoyed my seven, almost seven and a half years here. And again, it's really a testament to, the staff here is incredible, working with, in particular, my very close friends in finance, Deb and Lori, but everybody here. It's just a joy to work here. It's been a wonderful place to come to work. I'm going to miss it greatly. So just thank you all very, very much. Let's take a picture. You get to stand up.
Nobody has a camera.
Just make sure you get most of Chris.
Oh, that's good.
All right, thank you. Thanks, you excellent. Very exciting. Friday the 5th.
Is there banner across the report?
Yeah. I'm assuming it's not.
It's not within the policy, sorry. All right, what better to follow Shawn than our formal budget proposals? So Maria, do you want to, how do you want to guide us through this? So you've given us copies of the resolutions here. Does everyone have copies, a copy of the resolution?
Shawn said we have to read this one and the first part of it.
So my understanding is that we need to read both the operating budget resolutions as well as the capital budget resolutions. And I'm hoping that Shawn can provide a bit of guidance in terms of whether or not we need to read these word-for-word verbatim, or if there are just certain sections that can be referenced.
So typically, we would read the resolutions for the operating budget verbatim, that's the one and a half pages here. The motions for the capital budgets, the first motion is the only one you need to read, again, with copies being available here in public. The first motion is to waive the reading of the full text of the resolutions and just to approve them en masse.
I volunteered before if you want, but...
Sure, go ahead.
Unless Shawn would like to continue reading.
I'm going to take my budget.
I make the following resolution pursuant to Section 808 of the Town Charter, and the following motions were introduced at the special meeting of the Board of Finance on April 9, 2018. Be it resolved that the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of the Board of Selectmen annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, shall be approved and implemented in the amount of $21,027,277. Be it resolved that the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of the Board of Education annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, shall be approved and implemented in the amount of $69,149,552. Be it resolved that the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for purposes of paying the expenses of Sewer Use Fund, Sewer Treatment Plant, Residential Rental Properties, Simsbury Farms Special Programs, Non-Public Schools, Debt Retirement, Capital and Capital Non-Recurring Annual Budgets for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, shall be approved and implemented in the amount of $13,189,209. In accordance with Sections 406 of the Automatic Referendum and 808, Duties of the Board of Finance on the Budget of the Charter, the recommended operating budgets will be submitted to a referendum in the following forms. Questions for the referendum ballot. One, shall the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of the Board of Selectmen annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, be approved and implemented in the amount of $21,027,277? Question mark? Okay. Two, shall the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of the Board of Education annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, be approved and implemented in the amount of $69,149,552? Three, shall the appropriation recommended and approved by the Board of Finance for the purposes of paying the expenses of Sewer Use Fund, Sewer Treatment Plant, Residential Rental Properties, Simsbury Farms Special Programs, Non-Public Schools, Debt Retirement Capital and Capital Non-Recurring Annual Budgets for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, be approved and implemented in the amount of $13,189,209?
Thank you, Cheryl. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further conversation? All who approve say aye.
Aye.
Any against say nay. So carries.
I moved, should I go on to the second motion? I moved to set the automatic referendum for the budget by motion to set the date of Tuesday, May 1, 2018, for automatic referendum pursuant to Section 406 of the Town Charter from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Henry James Memorial School.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further conversation? All who approve say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against say nay. So carries. And now we are on to the resolution regarding capital projects. Shawn, you want to go?
Sure, I'll do this one. Resolved under motion duly made, seconded and adopted, the reading into the minutes of the full text of the resolutions set out below is waived. Copies of the resolutions have been made available to those in attendance and recorded in those records immediately preceding these meetings. We need to vote on that first.
Minute.
Yep. Second?
Second.
Any further conversation? All who agree say aye.
Aye.
Any against say nay. So carries.
So resolved that the Board of Selectmen recommends and approves the following. CIP, General Purpose Projects Cash, Greenway Improvements for the amount of $275,000. Highway Pavement Management, $845,000. Sidewalk Resurfacing, $250,000. Ash Borer Tree Mitigation, $85,000. School Projects Cash, Schools Facilities Master Planning Reconfiguration Study, $200,000. General Purpose Projects Grants, Multi-Use Trails, Simsbury to Bloomfield, $1,020,000. Sewer Use Fund Cash, Terriffill Sewer Rehabilitation, $100,000. Primary Clarifier Rehabilitation, $75,000. Plant Water System Rehabilitation, $80,000. Jet Flushor Truck Replacement, $175,000. And finally, the School Projects Bonds, District Network Infrastructure, $400,000. Henry James Middle School Renovation Phase III, $23,965,620. The Latimer Lane Boiler Replacement, $900,000. And the School Security Improvements for $850,000.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further conversation? All who approve say aye.
Aye.
Any against say nay. So carries. Thank you. Anything else we need to do with that? All right, we're on to the next agenda item, tax refunds. I need a motion to approve the tax refunds in the amount of $4,350.15.
So moved.
And to authorize Town... You just don't get the technical details of this studio. And Cheryl, to authorize Town Manager Maria E. Capriola to execute the tax refunds. You want to make a motion?
No.
Go ahead, Cheryl. Get your confidence back.
Yes, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further conversation? All who approve say aye.
Aye.
Any against say nay. So carries. Thank you. On to agenda item, proposed public gathering permits for 2018 events. And Jerry is going to come up and give us an overview.
Thank you. Before you have a recommendation for approval for a number of public gathering permits, on March 29, the Performing Arts Center Executive Director, Missy Donuno, who is here tonight and will be glad to answer any questions you may have on any of the events that we're looking for approval for. Missy presented to the committee on the 29th the attached events. Those in attendance, Mike Glidden, Assistant Town Planner, Sergeant Tom Sheehan, Soning Enforcement Officer Robin Newton, Fire Marshal Kevin Kowalski, and myself. Jason Brown of the Farming Valley Health District could not be there, and all events that are approved would be pending, of course, his approval. The events are listed, the Fair 5K Walk/Run on May 19, the Terriffill Band Concert on Saturday, June 23, the Mainly Marathon on Friday, June 29, the Connecticut Volley Dig Volleyball Tournament on Saturday and Sunday, August 18 and 19, September Fest on Friday, September 7 through Sunday, September 9, the MS Walk on Sunday, September 23, the Branham Foundation Event on Sunday, September 30, and the Chamber of Commerce Chili Challenge on Saturday, October 27. Any questions you have?
Any questions for Jerry or Missy?
Just a quick one. Jerry, as part of the process, the Police Department reviews these, correct?
Yeah, Tom Sheehan actually is, attended all of them, and there were a couple of events that did require extra duty officers, I should have mentioned that, and he had, they reviewed those and signed off on them, but all the events were signed off by the Police Department.
Right, and the Police Department, as you said, staffs appropriately based on the expected attendance, the type of crowd, et cetera.
Correct. And Missy will be in touch with them throughout, right up until the day of the event, on trying to give them the attendance figures that they're projecting.
Excellent. Appreciate that.
Could I ask a quick question about the volleyball tournament? Is that going to involve stakes in the ground holes? Is that going to be right at the Performing Arts Center?
It's going to be on the fields, right down at the Performing Arts Center. And one of the things that we talked about and they agreed to do is to move the courts each day so they don't have extensive wear areas in any one location.
That's what I was thinking.
And that was a concern of ours, obviously, given the time, the timing of, because we still have events down there that will be using the field. So they were very agreeable to this, and I think it's a good event, you know, to have down there. Certainly will bring in, you know, some folks from, you know, from out of town, as well as, you know, local people, and I know the Performing Arts Center Board will be, you know, will be supervising, overseeing the security of it. So I think it's a, be a good first-time event.
That's a two-day event?
It's a two-day event, right.
So there's other hospitality venues, I guess, are involved in that?
That'll be run by the Performing Arts Center Board, yeah.
No camping, right?
I was just getting to that. Hospitality venues, yes.
Jerry, we have the Mainly Marathon. That's new. That's a new event.
It's actually, I think it's the third year they've done it.
Here on the same, the same fourth.
And they only use, they, it's a, basically, they just use Iron Horse Boulevard, and they go back and forth pretty much better part of the day.
We still have our other running events in town.
We do.
They're still scheduled this year, I don't think.
Yes, yeah. And this won't disrupt, really no disruption at all to other use of the, you know, of the bike path or...
No, it's fantastic.
And no road closures or anything, so.
Just so we're clear, the Terriffill Concert does not involve camping in any way either?
That has not been, was not part of the proposal, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Jerry, the events that need food permits, that will be taken care of. We're approving it subject to the receiving of all of that.
Exactly, yeah. That's pending his approval. And Jason is aware of all the events, and I know he's been in touch with Missy as well, so I think that's all, you know, I don't see anything that shouldn't meet his approval and be able to sign off on.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? So I need a motion effective April 9, 2018, to approve the public gathering application as presented and to authorize issuance of those public gathering permits.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further conversation? All who agree say aye.
Aye.
Any against say nay. So carries. Thank you, Jerry. Missy, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Thanks a lot.
Next on the agenda item is fair housing, both a resolution as well as a proclamation. And Maria, do you want to do the background on this, or do you want me to do it?
I can just briefly.
Okay, go ahead. Yep.
So April is Fair Housing Month, and part of our small cities grant process is to engage in activities that support fair housing. So these are some of the activities that are recommended by DECD. Additionally, they, a number of these items are activities identified in our fair housing plan, which we are also required to have as part of that grant application process for DECD for small cities. So I would recommend that the Town adopt the various documents related to fair housing as presented.
All right, so let's start with the resolution. Are there any questions relative to the resolution?
No.
All right, I have a motion effective April 9, 2018, to adopt the fair housing resolution and fair housing policy as presented and to authorize Town Manager Maria E. Capriola to execute the documents.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further conversation? If not, all who approve say aye.
Aye.
Any against say nay. So carries. And then I need a motion to recognize and declare April as Fair Housing Month in the Town of Simsbury and to authorize Deputy First Selectman Chris Kelly to execute the fair housing proclamation as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? Maria, was there anything else you wanted to say on that, or are you all set?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All who agree say aye.
Aye.
Any against say nay. So carries. What? Would someone like to read the proclamation?
Absolutely. Yeah, go ahead.
It's a big night for you, Chris.
Big night, yeah. Thank you. Proclamation, whereas the year 2018 marks the 50th anniversary of the passage of the Federal Fair Housing Act, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 and as amended, and whereas this law guarantees that housing throughout the United States should be made available to all citizens without regard to race, color, religion, sex, family status, disability, or national origin, and whereas equality of opportunity for all is a fundamental policy of...
policy of this nation, state, and town, and whereas barriers which diminish the rights and limit the options of any citizen will ultimately diminish the rights of all citizens, whereas the cooperation, commitment, and support of all residents of the Town of Simsbury is necessary to removing barriers to the enjoyment of living where one chooses within one's means. Now therefore, I, Chris Kelly, Deputy First Selectman of the Town of Simsbury, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as Fair Housing Month and request and encourage every citizen and business of our community to support and endorse fair housing, to reaffirm their commitment to fair housing for all, and wholeheartedly recognize these rights and responsibilities throughout the year. In witness whereof I have placed my sign and the great seal of the Town of Simsbury dated the 9th day of April 2018, Christopher Kelly, Deputy First Selectman.
Thank you, Cheryl. Next on the agenda is another policy review, its proposed revisions to the affirmative action policy and compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Maria, you want to do a background on that?
Sure.
Yep.
Again, these are additional policies that DECD, as part of the small cities grant process, requires us to update periodically, particularly when we have staffing changes. So we would be looking to update and re-adopt our affirmative action policy as well as our compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 policy. Oh, I'm sorry, and just, I will also add that since these do have a spillover into personnel and HR, we did have Labor Council review both of these policies, so those have been edited and reviewed by council.
Any questions for Maria? Then I need a motion to adopt the affirmative action policy and the compliance with the Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 policy as presented and to authorize town manager Maria E. Capriola to execute the documents.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further conversation? All who approve say aye.
Aye.
Any against say nay. So carries. Next on the appointment, or next on the appointment, next on the agenda is the appointment of Leclair Ryan as Labor Counsel. We did get a bit of an overview of this earlier, but Maria, if you want to speak to it, feel free.
Sure. So very recently, we received notification from our current Labor and Employment Council firm that Mike Harrington was going to be leaving Murtha and going to a new firm, Leclair Ryan. We've had this happen recently, in the last few years, where we had pension council that left one firm and went to another firm, as well as some special land use council that left one firm and went to another firm. In those instances, we followed council to their new firm. Particularly with all of the transitions going on at the moment, my recommendation would be that we follow Mr. Harrington to his new firm. I did check with the town attorney regarding our appointment procedures here for council, and he did confirm that we appoint the firm, not the individual, so that if we did want to follow Mr. Harrington to his new firm, that we would just need to make a motion to that effect. Mr. Harrington has prepared a draft engagement letter. Again, I did have the town attorney review that. He is comfortable with the engagement letter as presented, and Mr. Harrington's new firm is honoring his hourly rate with his previous clients if we do make that switch. And also, your motion on December 4th, when you made the motion to appoint Labor Counsel, said with the option to conduct RFPs after June 30th, 2018. I would like to review that matter of issuing an RFQ with the Personnel Subcommittee at an upcoming meeting. So in your draft motion, I have provided that same language, that staff would have the option to conduct an RFQ after June 30th of 2018.
Thank you. Any questions for Maria?
Yes, question.
All right, I need a motion to appoint the firm of Leclair Ryan as Labor and Employment Counsel for the Town of Simsbury through December 2nd, 2019, with the understanding that staff has the option to conduct an RFQ for Labor and Employment Counsel after June 30th, 2018. Further move to authorize town manager Maria E. Capriola to execute the engagement letter as presented.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any further conversation? All who agree say aye.
Aye.
Any against say nay. So carries. Thank you. I need a motion to accept the resignation of Lori Fernand as regular member of the Recycling Committee, retroactive to March 19th, 2018.
So moved, with our thanks.
Second.
Any further conversation? All who approve say aye.
Aye.
Any against say nay. In regards to Jonathan Lashiver, we have two resignations. The first is a motion to accept the resignation of Jonathan Lashiver as a regular member of the Design Review Board, retroactive to March 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further conversation? All who approve say aye.
Aye.
Any against say nay. So carries. And also a motion to accept the resignation of Jonathan Lashiver as a regular member of the Historic District Commission, retroactive to March 16th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? All who approve say aye.
Aye.
Any against say nay. So carries. And we have before us minutes first of the regular meeting of March 26, 2018. Are there any suggested edits to those minutes?
I did not have any.
If not, we have the minutes of the special meeting of April 2nd, 2018. Any suggested edits to those? All right, if not, we have our Selectmen liaison and subcommittee reports. Would anyone like to report from any of their subcommittee or liaison responsibilities?
I will mention that we have received a letter from the Conservation Commission, which is part of our package.
Okay.
I'll just quickly, everybody, obviously, we took up the budget, but it's important that we continue to do our responsibility and get folks out to vote for the referendum, whether for or against, because it's really important, as Joan articulated, 6% of the population comes out. It does need to be higher than that if possible, because this is setting the mill rate, this is setting your taxes, this is going to your police officers and your streets, your teachers, the good folks in this building, so it's important that folks come out, because we need to make sure that what we're doing with the public's money is what the public wants us to do, and that would be the opportunity to tell us one way or another, so.
Right.
Really would hope that folks would come out, and obviously, there's a very large capital plan, the largest capital project that we've had since the high school on there, so I would ask folks to get educated on that, continue to ask questions if they have them, and come out and decide on that item as well, so.
Thank you, Sean. Any other reports? Any items under communications that anyone wants to speak to? All right, so motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All approve, say aye.
Aye.
So carries. Thank you.
You're hired, Chris.
Ah, yes, Sean, we've still got to meet 59 minutes.
Even with all that proclamation.
Actually, I think it's 50.
I changed my flights for that.
Bless you, my son.